Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, the fourteenth of April, two thousand and nine. We're here in the John F. Rau Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at ten a.m. Council President Eric Garcetti, joined by my colleagues, Council members Wendy Gruel, Janice Hahn, Jose Weisar, Tom Labange, Jan Perry, Ed Reyes, Greg Smith, and Dennis Zine. That means we are at nine members, just one member short of our quorum. We are, and now with Mr. Weiss, we do have a quorum. Welcome to our viewers on Channel Thirty-Five, which broadcasts us live each meeting and rebroadcast us in the evening, as well as the members of the public who are here in council chambers and in our San Pedro and our Van Nuys Council facilities as well. Our agendas are available online at lacity.org or here in person. Those agendas are split into items that have been, that have had a public hearing and committee, and those that have not yet. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items, please fill out a speaker card either here or in Van Nuys or San Pedro. We'll make sure to work you into the mix. And with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacan, Cardinal, Gruel, Hahn, Weisar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Vice-Vice, Vice, Garcia, ten members present, and Quorum is present.
First order of business, please.
Approval in the minutes.
All right, Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weisar moves, and Ms. Hahn seconds, without objection. Those will be approved as well. Colleagues, on Tuesdays, we usually have a salute to the flag, and we know that our United States Navy has been in the news recently, and the heroism of all the men and women that serve in the United States Navy is well represented by I.C. Two Smith, who has returned from the Carter Hall. He happens to be related to one of our council members. I don't know if you'd like to introduce him, but I'd like to recognize Council Member Greg Smith for a very special Petty Officer Second Class to lead us in the pledge today.
Thank you, Ensign. Appreciate that very much.
Lieutenant.
If you can, please stand. Just a brief interruption. A recent return from tour-duty aboard the USS Carter Hall. The Carter Hall is a LSD ship, which is a landing dock ship, which was the base of operations for four hundred United States Marines, who were operating off his ship in the Persian Gulf, in the Arabian Sea area, near Kuwait, and Bahrain, and Iraq. While there, his ship also participated in evacuation, or mock evacuation, of two hundred American citizens, if there's a requirement to pull them out of the area. His ship also served as a training base for our United States Navy SEALs, may have been actually that same unit that rescued Captain Phillips just thirty-six hours ago, because that is their base of operations. Also, while there, the USS Carter Hall also served as a training area for the new Iraqi Navy. When they were there, they were training officers aboard the USS Carter Hall. And for their excellence in service at the USS Carter Hall, received a Battle E, which Ensign, pardon me? Lieutenant? Ooh, ooh. Admiral. Admiral Garcetti knows very well that the Battle E is given to very few ships in the United States Navy for one year of excellence in their field and in their squadron, and his ship was selected for the Battle E. But also, while he was there, he earned the Eastwast Award, which also the Admiral knows very well, is a very rare award, given to the top seaman on his ship in his rate. When he went through a three-hour interview process with the officers aboard, showing not only expertise in his field, but all fields aboard the ship. Welcome back, my son, for the flags, Matthew Smith.
Please put your starboard hand over your heart, that's the right hand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service. We very much appreciate you. Stay safe. With that, let's go ahead and run through the agenda, please.
On the regular agenda, item one is the Los Feliz Business Improvement District Ordinance Notice for Public Hearing.
Okay.
And there is a card on it, Mr. President.
All right, we'll call that special for card from the public. Next item, please.
Items two through six, our street lighting districts notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on May fifth.
All right. With that, there's no objection. We'll go ahead and continue those to the fifth, and continue the public hearings. Open the public hearings. Next items.
Item seven through twelve, our street lighting district ordinances notice for public hearing.
All right, anybody wishing to call those special, seven through twelve? We do not have any cards on those, so we'll close the public hearing. And if not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item thirteen is an ordinance notice for public hearing.
Okay. We do not have any cards on thirteen, so we'll close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call thirteen special? Not, go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Items fourteen through thirty-five, are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, fourteen through thirty-five. We've had public hearings on those. Mr. Labange?
Thirty-four, continue one week, please. High-speed rail, one week.
Okay, that would be April twenty-first, no objection. Okay. Ms. Hahn, then Ms. Gruel?
Fifteen special.
Fifteen for Ms. Hahn. Ms. Gruel?
Number nineteen for Mr. Parks, to be continued two weeks.
Okay, that would be till April twenty-eighth. There's no objection.
And thirty-five, we're calling special for an amendment.
Okay. We'll call that special for amendment. Mr. Reyes?
Yeah, an amending motion for number thirty-five.
Okay.
I'll be submitting that.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Hahn?
Thirty, please.
Thirty, all right. And Mr. Rosenthal?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one for Mr. Rosenthal. Okay. We will, yes, Mr. Weisar, sorry. Twenty-eight for Mr. Weisar. Any other specials, colleagues? No other specials, let's go ahead with the balance, then. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those will be approved, if we consent twenty-seven forth with, without objection. Next items, please.
Items thirty-six through fifty-six, are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for considerate.
Okay, do we have cards from public on any of those?
Yes, on item forty-two, forty-seven, forty-nine, and fifty-six.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings on the other ones. Any specials, Ms. Hahn? Fifty-three for Ms. Hahn. No other specials, colleagues? Yes, Ms. Perry? Fifty-two for Ms. Perry. And if there's nobody else wishing to call any special, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and the balance, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. That will take us back to general public comment, and Zuma Dog is our first speaker.
Yes, thank you, I'm very sick. Hopefully, you'll never see me in these chambers again. I hope it's the last time I ever come here. If you do see me, you're authorized to please shoot me, I'm begging you. Either in the chambers or outside. I don't want to be here. It's not cute. You know, please don't thank me for being here. I don't want to ever be here again. But I do have something very important. Please pay attention, City Council. As you know, I've come here for the past three years, and I've been right every step of the way. I can't even live with how I'm so right all the time, and you are so wrong. And it is a lot to live with. From coming in here and saying subprime foreclosures are going to be a problem, and having Alacan say, "Oh, no, there's no such thing in the city of L.A., everyone's perfect," to saying that the cost of oil is going to cause all these problems, everything, everything, everything. Now I'm here to say, the only thing that you need to be talking about is the water crisis in this city. Everybody in the media, everybody in the city of Los Angeles, wipe the slate clean. There is no issue that needs more discussion immediately than the water crisis that is immediately before us. I have warned you over the past three years, due to a federal judge of the Colorado River of endangered species, that we're going to cut the spigot. We are here before us. I spoke with David Nahai on Friday. I am here to tell you people, the city is about to be crippled by the water crisis. We do not have the water. We're going to be getting eighty percent less water from the state. So if you had enough water for a hundred houses, now you'll have enough for twenty. You cannot certify the density projects, and Eric Garcetti's having a good time laughing. Please hold my time till Eric Garcetti is done laughing and chit-chatting and taking pictures.
Mr. Dog? Mr. Dog, you're out of order right now. It is my prerogative whether or not I'm talking to the sailor right now or not. No, Mr. Dog, it is not your prerogative to ask, so if you have anything left to say that's pertinent to city business, please do it. Okay, that's, the next speaker is Sky Anderson. Our next speaker is Sky Anderson. You've been warned for tomorrow, sir. And then we'll go to Sean in Van Nuys.
I'm Sky Anderson, I'm a resident of Hollywood. I get no benefit personally from coming up here. I'm just trying to follow the steps of Mahatma Gandhi and other people, that deeply cared about our society. I watched Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Labange improve the quality of life in Hollywood in the last ten years. I came here ten years ago, and Hollywood was a dump. There was no subway there. Hollywood and Highland Complex wasn't there. There was no Borders Coffee Shop bookstore. There was no music store, and now it's a thriving community. Other parts of the community, the nation are in recession, but Hollywood is booming. That's because of the leadership of Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Labange. But I want to talk about suffering. I'm a deep fan of Mr. Rosenthal, but he voted, I believe, he adhered to the fact that he's going to put restrictions on the amount of people that can live in cars in Venice Beach, etc. What he's really adhering is suffering, 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 death. You take life, make it backwards, and it spells evil. I saw a man who was dumped by somebody on a sidewalk near a eating place, and he was there a month, and he was crippled, and people didn't know what he meant, he died. That's suffering. I saw an aide to Mr. Garcetti last Thursday, and at ten o'clock, and I suggested to him that we develop a website. Mr. Garcetti, I know you don't care about homeless, I know that from my personal experience. Anyway, they develop a website that would list all the services that are available to the homeless, including recovery facilities, recovery homes. So if a person has a drug problem or an alcohol problem, they could put in a home to take care of them. Psychiatric hospitals all over the state, so a person's crazy, and many of the homeless are crazy. I've called Mr. Sam Siegel twice, he doesn't return my phone calls. The same thing, the last person I worked with for three months wouldn't return my phone calls. These are Mr. Garcetti's staff. They don't give a damn about homeless people. They don't give a damn about suffering. They care about their prestige, they care about their money. Thank you.
Just as, to correct the record, Mr. Anderson, we have about seventy-five people that are working in Hollywood right now on the issue of homelessness. We care very deeply about it, and we suggested that you join those efforts with both the Business Improvement District, people assisting the homeless, and the folks that are building out the shelters right now. We welcome that, but I know you've been a little bit upset with that. Mr. Sean in Van Nuys, and I'm sorry to Sean, we've been informed by our I.T.A., we don't have the video link today, but we do have audio link from Van Nuys, so folks could please direct their attention, and we will be able to listen to you, Sean in Van Nuys. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, President, City Council. I hope you had a nice Easter, and I hope it was a good, it was a nice Easter Sunday. Listen, I'd like to, I'd like to talk about the election. I don't even know who's running for C.D. Two. I hope you got, covered the election results in the next couple or three weeks. I hope, I hope we get somebody good in C.D. Two, because like Wendy Gru and Joe Wax, we need another person to run C.D. Two that's very, very good. Also, I want to talk about the, about the city budget. Do not, please do not lay off city workers. Please keep the parks and libraries open for the kids in the summer, because the kids are out of school, and they don't have anything to do. Please keep the parks and libraries open. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, and thank you for your understanding with the video link today. We'll hopefully get that up and running very soon. Information Technology Agency is at work on that. Michael Carrion is our next speaker, here in council chambers, and then Walter Bechtel will follow. Good morning.
Morning, City Council. Can you please have the rest of people quiet down? Mr. Labange, we're trying to speak up here. It's funny that when we are speaking out here, you had a sergeant-at-arms attack us and tell us to quiet down, but Mr. Labange and his party continued to talk, and I can't hear myself.
We can hear you, sir. If you'd like to give, we will make sure that we can do that. Please move forward with your comments.
Can you hold my time and have a sergeant-at-arms tell me to shut up?
Please go ahead, sir.
Yeah. There we go, the hypocrisy.
I can ask everybody to please move their conversations outside or to the sides, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Carrion.
Okay, parking enforcement, once again. There were ninety-six vehicles parked in a three-block radius from this building here, and not one city councilman has taken initiative to do something about it. This is illegal parking. Mr. Labange had mentioned he was going to do something, but again, like hot air, didn't mean anything. He just mentioned it, mentioned it. I have an impound receipt here from a vehicle that was impounded, and now I understand why it is you guys are citing and impounding. The city makes a hundred dollars on every impound, yet the city doesn't want to get up their butt to do anything about the illegal vehicles that they are parking. So it goes back to the same thing. Gentlemen, just made it clearly. Your prestige means everything. Your inability to do something about these matters shows the public exactly what we're talking about. Mr. Labange is a very good photo opportunist, because he jumps up to take photos about everything, but he told me he was going to do something about this, and hasn't. So it's just hot air. I expect somebody, trying to choose my words so I don't get upset, to do something about it, to do the right thing. You talk about police corruption, it starts here. When you allow them to break the laws, they go along thinking they can break any laws. There's no parking room, so they break the parking laws. They don't have enough money, and next thing you know, they're going to be robbing banks.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker, and after that will be Arnold Sachs.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. I wanted to come back and say something about last week. I was going over the videos from last week, and it sounded like I was a very cold kind of a person, and wanted to put people out on the street or something. When I was talking about the Ford Hotel, the Ford Hotel is having its units reduced from two-hundred-and-ninety-five to a hundred-and-forty units. That would constitute putting people out on the street. My idea was to retain the units and use the money to purchase an adjacent building at seven-twelve Gladys, which formerly was the residence of my cousin Marilyn Monroe's grandmother, Katie Keller. When she lived there in nineteen-ten, I thought it would be in the spirit of Mr. Weisar's idea to, to, to open up or re-establish some more cultural-based ideals over in that area that was already begun a few years back. And if you added that building to that, I thought that would be a good idea. Use it as another building, possibly, as a central focus for SRO security or maintenance or something like that, because it's a real blind spot there, and I thought it would be better to do something like that than to spend a whole bunch of needless money on refurbishing and down, and the Ford Hotel, and reducing its units. Because the people, like, I'm not a mean person, it's just the people over there have never had that kind of freedom before, and even as it is, they tend to waste water and, and cause a lot of damage and things. I thought it would be a good place for homeless people to go in there, too. So I'm just being, trying to be more kind.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bechtel. Appreciate your comments. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker.
Good morning, City Council. I thought the council set a new low two weeks ago with your shameless show regarding the rape backlog by bringing in the people to speak about how this needs to be cleared up. But then last week, with your discussion regarding the Eli marathon, you managed to lower the bar to a new high. Legacy runners coming before the council looking for relief, when it was the council's sleazy actions that allowed the change to take, of the date to occur. To sit here on last Wednesday's meeting and listen to council members declare they did not vote for the change of date to Memorial Day, no one voted. The change was put into motion when the council agreed to the first change from March to February twenty-first. You remember that? Patriot's Day. And I think I've had a few discussions about how ridiculous and stupid that idea was. You've had races on the weekends. Where are the religious leaders for those races? The McCourts wanted the change, the change was made. When the legacy runners realize they have as deep pockets as Frank McCourt, maybe their voice will be heard. So now it goes back to committee. The most interesting item revealed in Wednesday's commentary was that to change the date, the city will have to violate its contract. What was the contract discussed? In the committee? No. In the council chambers? No. Brand-new information. You know, Mr. President, I've often said, the law states that marathons can't be run on a weekend, they must be run on a Monday. You've corrected me. So now I know the answer, it's a contract. So what, the city, the city's asset, which was sold for pennies, will now cost the public dollars. So here's my question, do you always stay submerged in your political boat, your pool of political boat, or will the next time you come up for air be the first time you come up for air?
Our next speaker is Matt Dodd. After that will be Stephen Louvina.
Yes, thank you so much. Had a great weekend. I was just chuckling all weekend long about the city's share market policy, which became apparent last week. Seems like you've got a buy-and-hold strategy, and that's it. But that's not how it works. You need to trade out, you need to short your positions, and how come these analysts, these people haven't been fired, who lost the seven billion dollars? Since I've been down here in City Hall three years, seven billion and a five-hundred-million-dollar deficit, and the two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand that was awarded to Michael Hunt against the city, that makes seven-point-five billion and some chump change so far. It's a lot of money. Why aren't people getting fired? Where are your experts, your market analysts, and all these people? They're nuts. So this is what happened to Venice Beach. Anyway, in two thousand and seven, the federal judge showed us a document with all the law that was on our side. He's now ruled it, because you guys didn't settle, like he told you to, and we spent a whole year with all these attorneys, hundreds of thousands of dollars, making this new ordinance up, but then, then you refused to settle with us. So he ruled it in such a way that Michael Hunt already had one jury, already got a bunch of money, and now we're set to roll to an appeal on the other part, and that's going to be Michael Hunt stay away for two years. How much is that one going to be? So the city of Los Angeles and the city attorneys really need to get together. I'm going to come down every day and tell you how badly you did, losing seven-point-five billion dollars. Bernie Parks, it's his department. Where's the office of the Committee of Budget and Finance, whatever they are? They have not got their eye on the ball, Channel Thirty-Five, it's a total disaster.
Our next speaker is Stephen Louvina.
Good morning, sir. Good morning. Thank you very much. My issues with the city of Los Angeles, in February of two thousand and three, an alley behind my property was vacated by the city for the purpose of diminishing the disruption of privacy and to help prevent... of privacy and to help prevent possible intrusion of prowlers, and to help eliminate the problem of vandalism. When the alley was vacated, no one came to inspect the condition of the alley, which has a forty-foot drop. As the alley has a steep holes, shrubs, and it was not, it's impossible for any vehicle to drive through. There are no electrical poles, sewers, lines through this alley. I went to the county assessor's office and they assessed me that I was now the owner of the alley, which is thirteen-and-a-half feet wide, and is not part of my, and is not part of my property. The city said it had an easement. There's no poles, there's nothing going through there. So to prevent intrusion of prowlers, I put a wooden fence, and someone called an inspector and he came, I had to tear it down because it was an easement. It is not, in my opinion, an easement. I am now being taxed by the assessor's office, and the property was given to us. My original property was fifty feet wide by two-hundred-and-nine feet long. It has been reassessed, fifty feet wide, two-hundred-and-twenty-two feet and a half, and I have been paying taxes since two-hundred, two thousand and three. The interpretation of easement is to provide access to utilities of which there is none in the entire alley. The city wants me to keep my property open to anyone could trespass, which is contradictory to the reasons it was vacated. So now only I pay taxes on this property, but I am responsible for the entrance and the liability for any trespasser. The city of Los Angeles tells me that I cannot enclose my yard to keep vandals out of my yard.
I'm sorry, sir. We try to keep it to two minutes per speaker, but what neighborhood do you live in? Which neighborhood do you live in?
I live in the Bull Heights, Huizar's area, which I can, I've tried to contact him and I never did announce.
We'll see if we can get, we can get some help for you this morning, okay? Thank you. Mr. Huizar will assist you right now. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in. That will close our general public comment. If we can take up items forty-two and forty-seven and forty-nine, please. Mr. Clerk, item number forty-two, and that was called special for card from the public. Mr. Zuma Dogg, item forty-two. Mr. Dogg here. Mr. Dogg, going once, going twice. We'll close the public hearing on that. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Item forty-seven, please. It's also called special for card from the public. Mr. Dogg. Again, Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to come forward on forty-seven.
Thank you, and I'd appreciate if you would count my minutes correctly, not like last Wednesday. You still actually owe me two minutes, if you go check the tapes. And I heard what happened to Zuma Dogg, and so I'm going to take up the bat.
We're talking about the SB sixty?
Yeah, I mean, he would be talking about this, and so I'm going to take up the bat and, and continue on with what he would be talking about. So, yeah, this one, we're going to vote this in and support for this, you know, DMV thing the state's doing, another one of these resolutions that the city is going to support, and it comes down to an ID thing, and there's a lot of immigrants, I'm one of them, and I want all those people out there, you can come down here and you can speak Spanish language, you can speak any language you want to the city council.
That'll close our public hearing on that. Do we have the amendment circulated on that? Okay, we'll hold that on the desk. Take up item forty-nine, please. Mr. Dogg on item forty-nine. Not here still, Mr. Dowd on item forty-nine.
The backup, the backup is here, yes. One of our favorite items, the special event fee waiver. Took Jack Weiss to, you know, put a memo on the floor here, and it took six years, and we had to jump up and down and scream, make a bunch of noise, and you changed all the rules of decorum, but finally, we got some movement on these special event fee Some of them are still ridiculous in this day and age, and let me just see if I can find a couple. They've got some good ones, too. See, here's one. Fire Service Day on May nine, five-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty-six. Maybe we ought to be hiring some more firemen with this money. Okay, here's one. Cardenas and these are Israeli Independence Day Festival. See, if we start having festivals for every country all over the world, we're going to end up with thousands and thousands of dollars of these fee waivers. So it's time for people like Tom Labonge to get busy on some of these things that can actually save money. Now, Zuma Dogg's talked about it a hundred times.
Sir, could you just talk a little further away from the microphone? It's getting distorted, so we can't hear you, and the folks on TV can't hear you very well.
I'm a, I'm a performer of Venice Beach, and I'm used to being up, right up on the mic. It's part of my training, so I'll just try and lower my voice for the benefit of Channel Thirty-Five. But the, you know, we, we got upset here for a long time. A long time we got upset over these fee waivers, and you know what? They were giving them to Grammy Awards and the Academy Awards and all these ridiculous things with two-hundred, three-hundred thousand dollars. So I'm glad that's over.
I'll close our public comment on this item. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next, sorry, do we have the amendment on forty-seven circulated?
No, Mr. President, it still has not been circulated.
Okay. Let's go ahead then, back to, we have item fifty-six. Mr. Dowd, if you'd like to come forward. Mr. Dogg's still not here, on item fifty-six.
Yeah, we, we talked about these track maps. I think if they turn up the in-house, then I can probably hear myself. There's a lot of chatter going around, Mr. President, a lot of.
We can hear you very well. I know.
I'm having trouble. That's why I have to yell into the mic. Anyway, see, the city of Los Angeles, to me, with these track maps and a lot of the issues, it's, it's like an airliner that's crashing, and we're, we're, we're in the cockpit and the pilot's dead. He slumped over the controls. That's the mayor, that's Villagosa. And we're coming running down the aisle of the plane screaming, we need help, we need a pilot, someone, and the whole council's sitting there having their drinks in business class going, oh, can you keep it down? You know, we're trying to enjoy our cocktails. The city is crashing badly at the hands of the Office of Budget and Finance, Parks and Rec, Plum Committee, Density, it's all here in these track maps. And that's the blueprint for the density. You got the, the mayor, the, see, little teacher's about to get fired now as well. That's because of the mayor. He's, he's ripped all the money out of LAUSD, had Admiral Boer in there. I'm way off topic. I don't know where the city attorney is on this, but it's a mess.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That will close our public comment on that. If we can, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. If we can reconsider forty-eight, that, we did get a card in on forty-eight. If you can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And Carlos Adley, if you'd like to come forward on item number forty-eight. We got your card a little late, so, sorry. Want to make sure we get your comments in this morning. Good morning. Good to see you.
Um, actually, we're here, I am here in regards to the response from the city. We're kind of unclear what's happening right now with the alley abatement slash vacate behind our property on Coanga. So once we hear what the city proposes, then we can get together with the attorney property owners and come up with a kind of a cohesive comfort level of where we are. Quick background scenario, I own the Velvet Margarita. We'll be celebrating our five-year anniversary as one of the country, rest, countries and cities' top restaurants, and we're very proud of that, the fact that we're actually a restaurant and not a nightclub operating under the guise of a restaurant. With that said, about five, six years ago, we went through the city, did all the necessary petitioning, and put tens of thousands of dollars into the back alley area. Through hard work, sweat, and a lot of passion, we have come up with what is the walkway-threway, which the city is suggesting that we make a common area. Now, we're somewhat okay with that. We just need to make sure we get together and we do what's best for our interests and the city's interests, and there's some security issues and some other factors that we need to discuss. So I guess until we find out what the city proposes, then we can take it to the next step.
Let me see if we can get somebody down here right now to talk to you about that. Okay?
How do you want to go about that? Can I switch?
I'll have a staff member come. If you'd just hang out here for a sec.
Thank you so much.
You bet. Good to see you as well. All right, we'll go ahead, hold that on table for a moment. We have a substitute on item forty-seven that has been submitted. Mr. Clerk, like a copy. The, the substitute phrase is that not would therefore be resolved with the concurrence of the mayor, that by the adoption of this resolution, the city of Los Angeles hereby includes in its two thousand and nine-ten state legislative program support of SB sixty CDO that we require the California Department of Motor Vehicles to issue driver's licenses that are compliant with the Federal Real ID Act of two thousand and five. Okay? With that, if there's no objection, we'll accept that substitute. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. If we can go back to items called special from beginning.
And item one was called special for cards from the public.
Okay, item one is now before us. We have Barbara Ferris as our first speaker. If you'd like to come forward, thank you for your patience and very good morning.
President Garcetti, honorable members, I appreciate the opportunity to come and address you about this matter. I'm one of about ten local businesses in the Los Feliz Village Business Improvement District, and there has been simmering for some time, some unhappiness with the bid, and we took the time to educate widely that there is an opportunity to protest. No one knew that there was. So we took the time to do that. We've tried to keep it not personal and try to be constructive in this. We were successful in bringing fifty-six protests for the first time in the history of the Los Feliz Village bid, since there has been not one single protest apparently before this. No one knew they could. We need some changes and some reform in this bid. It's quite clear in the talking that we did with our neighborhood businesses, and we hope that you understand that those fifty-six people are out there working, they couldn't be here today. So what we would like to see in the next year done is many, many things that need to be done in this bid to reform it. There are irregularities in the balloting, and when it comes to elections in every year, we would like that fixed with a codified way to make sure that every bid member that is assessed gets a ballot. That has got to be a must. There are many other things, there are financial oversight things that nobody knows what's being spent or what it's, what's being done with the money because it's not being communicated to the, the members of the bid. We will be working with the bid to make sure that these improvements and, and things get done, and that we will be doing that in a courteous manner as we can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And if we can just, there's still a lot of conversations that are happening, colleagues. If we can please take those conversations behind chambers or outside. Thank you. Carrie Slattery is our next speaker. After that is Donna Wong. Good morning as a customer, as well as a council president.
Hi, my name is Carrie Slattery. I'm the general manager and co-owner of Skylight Bookstore in Vermont, and for the last year I've been on the board of the Los Feliz Village bid. And I just want to say that I was very happy that the last speaker said that the people who were unhappy would be interested in working with us because up to now, they have not even come forward and said their names and, or given us a, an email, or at least to me. So that would be wonderful. We're, we're all, I think we're one of three or four bids in the whole city that are business-based as opposed to property-based, which is very challenging since most of us are independent and small businesses, and it is difficult to come away from warning from our business. But we're also committed to our neighborhood and to all of the businesses there, and I'm very impressed with the people that are working with us on the bid in terms of improving our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Wong is our next speaker, and then after that, another of my favorite businesses in Los Feliz, represented by Dora Herrera.
Good morning, council members. I'm here as the neighborhood prosecutor assigned to northeast area, just to make a general comment concerning my personal interactions with the bid since I've been assigned to northeast in two thousand and five. Since I began serving in the post of the northeast, more northeast prosecutor, we've been able to work with the bid and use the bid to disseminate information, disseminate training notices, also help the businesses filter up issues and troubleshoot issues to the law enforcement family that serves the area. We've handled a number of matters that involve either robberies or allegations of extortion, violations of business and professions codes, also aggressive panhandlers and other issues that affect the day-to-day life of the business owners and their customers. Without the bid's presence, without their leadership in that business community, we would definitely have had to address all these issues in a piecemeal fashion, and as a result, we would have probably had to spend much more time and energy and resources to satisfy the needs of the community in this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. Dora Herrera is our next speaker. After that is Jonathan Sample. Good morning.
Good morning. Glad to be here. As a thirty-three-year business owner in the Los Feliz area, I, I know how much the bid has done to improve the area, to increase the recognition as a destination dining and shopping area. We get publicity not only in Los Angeles, but in the New York Times and other, the USA Today. To address a couple of Barbara Ferris's comments, thank you, sir. The packet that the city sends out every year includes our annual budget, our proposed expenditures for the next year, and it also includes a way that every member in the Los Feliz Village bid can protest the bid renewal. The city recently audited, started auditing all the bids, and we drew the long straw, and we were the first bid audited by the city. They audited four years back, and we balanced to the penny on every single year. Also, the only recommendation the city clerk had for us was to spend more of our money and to provide improved records, only in the sense that some of them were copied and some of them were originals. We had all the records, but they said, you know, it'd be better if you had the originals in the packet. So those are the only two recommendations that the city clerk had for the bid. Over the years, we've done several things. We planted over a hundred trees. Before the mayor even thought of his Million Trees Initiative, Los Feliz put in trees to improve the look of the area, to cool off the area. Am I done? Our next thing is we're working on the ADA lawsuit problem that has started to proliferate throughout the city, and we're working with the bid consortium to address that issue. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Jonathan Sample's our next speaker, then Neela Katschitz.
Good morning, council. Thank you for listening to us this morning. I'm a new business owner in the Los Feliz area, about a year and a half old now, and I recognize that the bid is not always communicated as well as it could be and introduced to the community, and rather than take an aggressive stance opposed to the bid, I took a, a stance where I wanted to get involved. So I'm a new board member in the bid, and I have seen the issues involved, and I think there are new, a lot of new people involved in the board who are taking a proactive stance and attempting to make things a little bit better with the general community and involve the community. I certainly appreciate Barbara's initiative in organizing the community in any effort, and we certainly welcome her interaction in the bid and welcome her to any of the meetings to resolve any of the issues that have come up over the last eight years that the bid has been in existence. We certainly, this year especially, are attempting to take a stance of complete transparency in an effort to include everybody. stance of complete transparency in an effort to include everybody. Small businesses, of course, need as much support as they can get, and most of that support can come from people in their neighborhood and their fellow business owners. So, again, I'm here in support of the bid and want to extend an invitation to anybody who maybe doesn't understand it or wants to get involved, to come to the meetings and be involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments this morning. Excuse me if I butcher the name, Nelia Kaczynszki.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Nelia Kaczynszki. I work at Chase.
Kaczynszki, thank you.
And I've been a member of the bid since nineteen ninety-three as a treasurer, when we were just a business association, and we became a bid in nineteen ninety-seven, and that's when I came back also as a treasurer in two thousand and four. I appreciate Barbara's comments, and I made every effort to make sure that we make our financial statement available to all the members. We have our monthly meetings where I submit the statements. We have all the budget and all the expenditures submitted every year to the city, and it's open and mailed to all the members. And also, when we were audited, and I'm proud that we were the first bid to be audited, and we balanced up to the penny on our books. And also, I would, for last year, we spent, just on beautification, we spent forty-two thousand. That's trimming trees and that's picking the truss, which the city doesn't do because they only trim trees every seven years. So, in between that, we do our part in trimming the trees every year, and that alone is seventeen thousand a year. And so, whatever money we receive, I make sure it's spent properly and prudently, and I also make sure that we have extra money for any contingency, and that's why when we were audited, we were told that we have to spend every penny we have, and I've been trying to do that ever since. So, if everybody wants to have, to see what we're doing, it's an open book. Everything is on our website. So, if they go to our website, they can see where the money is going. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelia. Our next speaker is Rob Valerio. After that is Heather Arnt. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for having me here today. I'm a new business owner in, sorry. My name is Rob Valerio, and I own a business along with my wife Heather on Hollywood Boulevard of Vermont. We just started a year ago. It's a tough recession, but we're making do, and we're really happy that the bid is there in existence to help clean up the community and make it a safe place for customers to come. And we at first opposed the bid, you know, thinking that we have this tax, but now realizing, now that we've decided to join the board, we're elected, and we realize that the bid can do great things for the neighborhood. We can help the city, and we can help our neighborhood, and we think that the bid should continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Arnt is our next speaker. After that is Mark Chinchelli.
Hi, I'm Heather Arnt. I have a new store in Los Feliz called Happy, and I am also newly elected to the bid, and just want to say that I support it and want it to continue. I think it's a benefit and has been a benefit for our store. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mark Chinchelli, and then after that is Armando Navillar.
Hi, I'm a relatively new resident and business and property owner in Los Feliz. I'm also a relatively new board member of the Los Feliz Bid, and I believe it's doing a good job and will continue to do a good job in improving commerce for local business owners in Los Feliz. I believe that the local business owners are a lot better off with the Los Feliz Bid than without. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Armando Navillar, and then that'll be our last speaker.
Hi, Armando Navillar, own El Capricho and El Capricho Pizzeria, president of the bid the last two years. I would love Barbara to come by and talk to us and sit down, and we'll fix all our little problems that we have. And I, you know, I approve of the bid.
Thank you all very much. Mr. Labonge.
This bid has been very effective, and no bid was out without hurdles. I know they all have some challenges, but I strongly support it because we know business improvement districts make a difference. So, I ask for an eye vote, and Ms. Ferris, I'll work with you, work with the bid and anyone else to make sure everything is the way it should be. Everybody's feeling good. Eye vote on this matter, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge, and proud to have a very small, two-block southern stretch of Hollywood Boulevard in the business improvement district.
It takes your leadership. You helped with that new gateway to the new island.
Absolutely, and thank you for your work there as well. With that, we have this now before us. If we can please open the roll on the renewal, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much. If we can go to the next item, please. I'm sorry, Ms. Perry, want to take out of order, actually, which was the number? Fifty-two, if there's no objection. Okay, we'll take fifty-two out of order. Ms. Perry.
Mr. President, for allowing me to take item fifty-two out of order. I'm standing here with the family members and friends of Clifton Hibbert, Jr. On Friday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and eight, shortly before two AM, Clifton Hibbert, Jr., who was twenty-two years old at the time, and Kenneth Patterson, who was twenty-three years old at the time, were senselessly murdered near Forty-second Street and Figueroa in South Los Angeles in Council District Nine. People, police believe they were victims of a robbery homicide. Exactly one year ago, we instituted a reward motion for up to seventy-five thousand dollars for any information leading to the identification of the person or persons responsible for the death of these young people. Today, I asked the city council to reinstate that reward because the public's help is still needed in this case, and we are all here today to ask for your help. Any small tip can help. This is a crime against the entire community. These young people, these young men, had their entire lives before them, and they were working hard to build a good future for themselves. Clifton was an aspiring lawyer and was a few weeks away from earning his college degree at Cal State Northridge. This is a horrible tragedy for Clifton's family and for Kenneth's family, and our hope is still that the reward motion of seventy-five thousand dollars will encourage witnesses to come forward. Now, the Hibbert family and the Patterson family joined together to rally the community by, through a walk. They brought together family members, community members, to ask the public to continue to support crime-solving efforts and to bring awareness. So, I'm asking my colleagues to do what they can do today to help spread that level of awareness, and I intend to put this on my Facebook page. We have some twenty-four-hour numbers, which I'll say at the end. With your help, maybe we can bring these families some peace. So, I encourage you all to put this on whatever e-blast that you use, work in partnership with us to help us find justice and peace for these families. And I want to introduce, I believe, the sister, Ayana of Clifton, to just say a few words and whomever else you decide.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Thank you for honoring that reward for my brother. I just wanted to read a few things. I just wanted to start off with a quote from Sandra Day O'Connor. "We do not accomplish anything in this world alone, and whatever happens is a result of a whole tapestry of one's life and of all the weavings of individual threads from one another that create something. A year ago, I stood before all of you after my brother, Clifton Hibbert, Jr., and Kenneth Patterson, was shot in front of forty-two forty South Figueroa after attending a college event. Unfortunately, their killings have yielded no results, and no one has come forward, and the killers have not been brought to justice. Since then, we've gathered together loved ones, family, friends, and community members to turn our personal tragedy and loss of Cliff into a motivating force to find justice, and we want his life to be honored, and we demand that the person responsible be identified and held accountable for their crime. We have not, we have to understand that a just society acknowledges that crime impacts everyone. It makes society feel less secure. It takes an impact on society. We must do better to ensure that our safety as citizens and as victims of violent crimes are afforded our legal rights and we're provided with assistance and guidance through our devastation. We ask that you continue to supporting us and the detectives and everyone that's involved in this case. I just wanted to just read, it's an excerpt from Cliff, I think through his own words will express this, the kind of person that he was. Just going to read an excerpt from one of his writings. This is when he was writing for, when he was applying for college. During the end of my sophomore year, my mother was diagnosed with breast cancer and had to undergo chemotherapy. This forced my mother to stop working and for my older sister to look for a job. Taking care of a family at such a young age was a blessing in disguise. It helped me to build character, perseverance, and determination. I will bring these four traits along with hard work to your legacy and be a true example that you can do anything if you don't give up and if you put your mind to it. When my mom got slightly better, I started to devote my time to clubs, activities, basketball teams, and I got a job. This helped me to manage my time and meet interesting people. I was the president of VCU for two years, and I'm now currently involved, and I'm now currently involved with a virtual business class that travels among the nation to compete in fair trades. I also volunteer as a basketball coach at the Boys and Girls Club of Inglewood during the weekends. Giving back to the community is another addition to your legacy. It's very admirable. I just say those words because I feel as though I should speak for my brother. I should speak through him. We're here together as one human family in this world and as a society, so it's very important that we fight justice and that we fight these crimes because unfortunately, you have to understand that violence, it affects everyone. It doesn't just affect us, but it affects every single one in this room, every single one in this society, and we have to take a stand, and we have to stop this. We want pressure to be put on the proper authorities. We want, we want people to come forward. That's what we want, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to have the Hibbert family here and the Patterson family. I'm Clifton Hibbert, Senior. My son been gone down one year, and it hurts. Take real lads from the family. I don't know if any of us here experienced that, but to have us, I mean, your junior will take away from you. You have to go to the cemetery and see his name on the wall. It's not easy. I'm just asking the community, I'm asking the law enforcement to help. We got to take back our city. What's going on in this city is very heartless. Our kids aren't able to walk around, go to the park, enjoy what we put there. I don't know what we can do, but there's something can be done to get back our city, and I'm asking each and every one, if they know anything, if there's any information out there, I mean, don't be scared. There's a number you can call. There's a website is there. I'm pleading, we have to take back our city. Today's my son, tomorrow it could be your son, your elder, your wife, I mean, one of your family member. It hurts, but I'm just asking for help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
My name is Kyle Troop. I'm a friend of Clifton Hibbert since preschool. We were about four years old. In a time of need, you have given my friends and family hope that you can truly be trusted to perform civic duty. From the beginning of this tragedy, we have counted on you to make it known that the death of Clifton Hibbert was an act of violence that must not be swept under the rug. Dealing with any death is hard enough, but when dealing with the murder of someone who was so loved and had such a promising future, one tends to find it very difficult to carry on in life. This has been an arduous time for my family and anyone else who was close to Clifton Hibbert, Jr. We have been doing our best to turn our anger and sorrow into a fuel for activism. That is why we are pertinent that the reward must be renewed. Clifton Hibbert, Jr. lived a great life that didn't deserve an ugly act that took it. We are doing our part, and we have started a website to help bring justice to Cliff and to his family at justiceforcliff.com. We'll one day, we'll one day be able to write anonymously about stories of pain and leave tips. Your commitment to renewing the reward for Clifton Hibbert, Jr.'s murderer will not only assist in the capture, but in also helping bring closure to a family that is distraught. I've given a great amount of thanks for setting light on the story of Clifton Hibbert, Jr. I know there are a number of social injustices occurring in Los Angeles area, and we are blessed to have enough, we're blessed enough to have our voices heard. I'll end with a quote from Margaret King, Jr. "An injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere." Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I'm the mother of Clifton Hibbert, Jr., and I'm here to say thank you for your support and continued supporting us to find justice for Clifton Hibbert, Jr. He's greatly missed, and my heart is truly broken. However, Cliff lives inside of me now, and he's a voice, and I'm reaching out for continued support for him and for others, because there's a lot of moms and loved ones who don't have a voice. So, we're here as a voice for Cliff, and again, thank you very much.
So, as I read the number in the record before we vote, the twenty-four-hour toll-free number is one eight seven seven lawful. That's one eight seven seven five two nine three eight five five, and you can leave anonymous tips at this number, and I ask all of you for an eye vote. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes, we'd like to say a few words. Mr. Reyes?
Well, first, my heart goes out to the parents. In this agenda, unfortunately, we know that Clifton Hibbert, Jr. and Kenneth Patterson deserve their justice. We also have two other young men who were shot and killed in broad daylight in Highland Park. That's the item right before this one, fifty-one, and that was Carlos Hernandez and Alejandro Garcia, and that was at three o'clock in the afternoon, next to a rec center a block away, a block halfway from their house. So, you're right. We need to let people know that they need to participate. We can't do it alone. Those of you who are watching this, someone saw something happen that day when these young people were shot and killed, and we need your help. So, help this family. Let them know that their lives mean something, and it's something we need to do. So, I thank you for your bravery. It takes a lot of courage, but I'm glad you're here because now many voices are being heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Thank you again to the family members and to Ms. Perry. With that, we'll take a vote on extending this reward motion. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We'll send that forth with, thank you very much. That is approved. Thank you. Appreciate your words very much. If we can take up forty-eight outstanding questions on that have been resolved, if we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Thank you. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item fifteen called special by council member Hahn.
Ms. Hahn, item number fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want, I wanted to clarify something on the sale of surplus property, and just wanted to know if there was anybody here that could clarify what our policy is right now up until June thirtieth about the selling of surplus property.
The CLA or CAO? Here's the CLA coming forward. See them both in the chambers. They're not allowed to walk up the same aisle, I think.
You're walking in my time, too. Yeah, tell me, just remind us about, you know, what our policy is in regards to the sale of surplus property in the light of kind of economic crisis we find ourselves in in the city of Los Angeles. Hold my time.
Certainly. Well, previously, surplus property had been split fifty-fifty. Fifty percent would go to the council district in which the property was located, and fifty percent would go into the general fund. Because of the budget situation we're in for this year, the council passed an ordinance calling for all of those proceeds to go into the general fund, and I believe that ordinance expires on June thirtieth of this year.
So, basically, any property that is sold before June thirtieth, it was the council's wish that all the money would, a hundred percent of it would go into the general fund.
That's right.
I was, I don't mean to single anybody out today, but there was two amendments to this motion today where that was not happening, and I think one of them is a special circumstance in Venice. Is there, can you explain to us what that is about? I just singled that one out.
Basically, parcel number one, the Oceanfront Walk, is basically, is applicable to the Venice Trust Fund, and so that was laid out separately, separate from the ordinance that was adopted for this year regarding surplus property.
So, that's a previous ordinance?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that trumps this, that anything sold in Venice... Okay, that trumps this, that anything sold in Venice or in the hole? Just in Venice it goes. Okay, so that's, that's a previous ordinance that trumps this. Okay, well, I just, I just wanted to bring this to light because I think all of us, you know, previously would like to get 50% of the surplus property because we all have needs in our district. But I think we were trying to, you know, kind of all share the pain for our budget crunch and willing to do this. So I just wanted to make sure that I understood the policy. I actually think until we dig ourselves out of the hole we're in, I, you know, I think maybe we should even consider extending that June 30th proposal, maybe for another year, maybe take a look at. I know, I think Councilman Gruhl would like to extend it maybe forever, but I certainly would be in favor of extending it another year and then taking another look at it. And I will say, I'm one of those that, the first time around, the animal shelter in San Pedro, I pulled it off the, the roll because I, there was a organization, a nonprofit organization in San Pedro that wanted to turn it into kind of a animal rescue place. So I pulled it off and I gave them a while to try to see if they could cobble together the money to purchase it. They were unable to do that, so I put it back on the roll. Mine doesn't make that much money, but it's enough that I think it will help for the general fund. I just wanted to clarify that and I hope all of us realize that, you know, we've all got to sort of share this pain as we, as we move forward. I would be in favor of supporting another extension on this for another year to see if we can't again try to close this incredible budget hole. Look, I've gotten heat in San Pedro for the raising of the parking fees. It's an issue that I have never been so pummeled it on in my entire political career and yet I'm sticking to kind of what we've all agreed to, that we all need to, all of us need to kind of share some of the pain of closing the budget gap. So I just wanted to say, it's not easy for any of us, you know, but I think we all need to kind of stay in this together and do what's best for the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gruhl.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. And yes, I did introduce a motion that doesn't make me popular with my colleagues, but that would permanently have this money 100% go into the general fund. It does not mean that you couldn't argue when it's sold that a portion of it could go, but it, I, my thought has always been, I use my district as an example, this year for the first time in my seven years, I had two pieces of property that were going to be sold. Even with that, I said, it's important for it to go into the general fund. One of the pieces of property is on Sherman Way is a animal shelter that I know has been there for a very long time because I got my dog there when I was four years old. It was not purchased by CD2 money. It was not in CD2 for many, many years. And even though I would love to have that benefit of it's, it's up for sale, at the point it was $5 million, I think it's up for $3.5 million to have that $2.5 million if it would have been to go to my district. However, I do believe it's not based on areas where other parts of the city may even need it more for special things. And so I mentioned last week, Ms. Hahn, to the CAO, where we're going to include in the mayor's budget again because we had suggested it 100% go into the fund a few years ago and then the mayor included it in his budget last year, that we should include that in the budget again this year. And that the, the plan is that it would be included. I don't know, Ray, if that is actually what's going to happen in the mayor's budget. I don't think we'll hear specifically today that that's going to be included, but my assumption would be that that would be the case. And so it is a, there are some things that you sell that have an impact on the pipeline. I know we've, you know, gone back and forth on that where there's some relationship to the usage of that that has had an impact on the neighborhood and we specifically on those pipelines have said it would be used for those things related to the street where the pipeline actually went. But gone are the days, colleagues, that we can say it's for our own district. You have to look at an entire city. And when we're in a budget deficit of a half a billion, half a billion dollars this year and with our pension fund next year, where we sat in ERC and discussed a little bit this morning about next year's pension fund and the briefings that we've had here for LACERS and for our police pension fund where we are obligated to make them whole, that's a $500 billion, $500 million projected deficit for next year. And as we go forward to 13 and 14 year, 2013 and 14, it looks even worse. So I hope that you all will support the ultimate goal, which is to have it go 100% into the general fund. And then we argue on the merits for each of the districts to get funds for their projects specifically, but, yeah, but yeah, at least we'll do it again this year. But I think it is important, colleagues, that we send a message, we're serious about having to sacrifice in our budgets and make decisions on a citywide basis and not just solely for the district. Because I'm telling you, neither the fire station that I, that I'm, we're selling hopefully soon on Coldwater Canyon or the animal shelter were in CD2. Even in the last district, redistricting was actually in CD5. So it really seems like an unfair situation if we don't do it in a way which is a citywide benefit. So I stand up to support you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. In this item, you do have parcel number four and it's a piece of property in my district and it states that 50 stays in the district and 50% goes into the general fund. Can you clarify what we're doing? Because I'm hearing different versions of what is actually occurring with this action. For the sake of clarity, we need to understand what's happening in that parcel in my district and what's going to happen with the resources. Please hold my time.
Well, I don't have that particular ordinance in front of me. General Services is here and could perhaps address it. But the, again, the council's, in connection with this year's budget, the council adopted the policy that, that all money goes to the general fund rather than split.
So the language on our agenda is erroneous?
Mr. Reyes, in order, for this agenda item to be implemented, it would require an ordinance change because the existing ordinance states that in this current year, if a property is sold, that all proceeds will go into the general fund. I'm not sure how this language got inserted for this particular piece of property, but in order to effectuate it, it would require another ordinance change. I don't know if that was the intent.
So someone, somewhere in the process of our departments wrote an erroneous statement for this agenda?
It's possible. Perhaps this was a carryforward from a previous year because if this was being proposed for sale like in 2007, '08, this may have been appropriate language, but since it's going forward in '08, '09, we could not do this without another ordinance change.
So my vote is not going to cause this to happen. This has to be changed.
Yes. Yes.
So, okay, I want to make sure we are actually acting out what we're voting on. And what I'm hearing from you is in this item, number 15, sections of this is an error.
It would appear that Section 3D, Recommendation 3D, if that language were simply amended to state that all net proceeds be deposited into the general fund, that would be consistent with the existing ordinance that's in effect today.
So we need to amend this action?
Yes.
So someone's going to give us language that truly reflects the action of this council?
If, if we could just strike the language after Isabel Street and instead of all of that language, strike it and insert deposit net proceeds into the general fund, that would be the correct language.
Okay, so from the point of view of an elected official giving up something from his district towards a general fund, should there be reciprocation as to what happens in the parts of the city where we assume that the benefit will be there? In other words, we did this because the district officials wanted to take care of their district because the general fund was not doing it, correct? That's the basis for our action.
That is correct. And this, it's consistent with what was proposed in the budget last year in the attempt to close the budget. And during discussions on the budget last year, there was an amendment by this council to, to take all of the proceeds and move them into the general fund for one year. And that's what's contained in the ordinance today, that it would only be in effect for one year. However, Councilwoman Gruhl does have an amendment or a motion that is actually pending in Budget and Finance Committee that would change that permanently to make it so that all future proceeds would be deposited into the general fund.
Okay, so if, if we're going to do that, then I may, I need to make sure that, and I'll take the action in the form of a motion, that if we're going to take that step, that we need to put on the table why we did it in the first place. So let me give you an example. I don't have the same number of street sweepers. I don't have the same level of service in cleaning my sidewalks, although I have four to five times the number of people using that same space. Our formulas do not acknowledge density. They acknowledge geography and real estate. We don't acknowledge people, we acknowledge land. So if this issue is going to evolve with the intention of taking this city wide and we give up our discretion, the real estate in our district, then let's pay attention to what we're not serving. That's the gap that needs to surface in a diplomatic way without it becoming a grab-bag affair. We need to understand that I believe four to five districts in the city are not getting served because of the poverty and density within those districts. And our formulas do not acknowledge that. So this opens up back discussion because we're giving up this discretion. So I need to lay that out and be as methodical as possible because we are one city. And I don't want to take away, but I think what's happening with our trash, what's happening with our debris, what's happening with accumulation of our contaminants is a direct result of not cleaning the curbs, gutters, and sidewalks of very dense and poor areas. That's a direct equation and we're not addressing it. So that's a motion I think we need to work on since we're going to give up that discretion. So I look forward to working with that and I'll put a motion to that effect, but I want to work with the jobs committee, I want to work with the gang committee because it's all interconnected. And this is taking away that discretion. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Gruhl.
I 100% agree with you because the problem is, right now, surplus property knows no boundaries. So in Mr. Weiss's district has some, maybe more, in wealthier parts of the area has property that's worth a lot more right now and doesn't have as much poverty as you do and doesn't have as much challenges in street sweeping. But surplus property was, I mean, this property was bought a long time ago, so there's been no, and this is why I'm arguing for us having a better policy, because there's been no strategy or policy that says when a property is sold, that it goes for the, where the needs are. Instead, it's been just because I might be lucky and I have five parcels of land and I get $10 million, you may have greater needs and maybe you should have gotten some of that money because it had no connection. So I'm, I just want you to know, I'm 100% agreement with you that it, there is no correlation between sale of surplus property and where the demands and the needs are for the services. And so it needs to be a policy that reflects that. And right now, it's only those areas that by chance happen to have surplus property that you get this extra money. Instead of, because even you look at, in the district today, yours property is worth 100, it's only 127,000. Right. And in, in my area, you know, the properties were worth three, five million, a million dollars. So you may have greater needs for certain things. So I, I think we are definitely on the same page that the history of this may have been to equalize the playing field, but in fact, it's been, had the exact opposite effect where it hasn't equaled the playing field. It's really been used as someone having that extra pot of money because you happen to have surplus property sold during the time in which you are an elected official. And I think it should be a, a much more stringent review of how it goes. So I just want to let you know, I'm, I'm 100% supportive of that.
Mr. Reyes.
Colleagues, would it be appropriate then, if we can ask to report that, just to get a thumbnail sketch of these deficiencies? And that's, I mean, we all have strong databases now with our technology, we can map this out very easily. But for example, if you look at the densities that occur, let's say we're at 40,000 to 60,000 per square mile in one pocket, we got the same budget as an area that has 3,000 to 6,000 people per square mile. Why the imbalance? Like, whose decision was that? Was it the department head? Was it the commission? Was it the local manager of that area? They say the council sets policy that drives their work program. If that's the case, then let's understand those imbalances. So if our CLA or CAO can guide me on how to best phrase that, because I don't want to just say something and say, yeah, Councilman Reyes said that and we'll revisit that in six months or a year or they'll forget about it. I'm not going to forget about this because we are giving up discretion. We're not dealing with these gaps. So what would be the best vehicle or tool, at least to get that discussion on the table? To discuss these inequities?
Sure. Well, Mr. Reyes, I, I think your point goes well beyond the issue of surplus property. It really is service delivery. It is how streets are identified for street work and, and it is how, whether it's left turn signals or, or street lights, it's really sort of the, the departments that are delivering the services and, and the formulas through which they determine what those needs are.
I agree with you, but my history and my experience tells me that if you bite too much, you're going to choke on it. That we need to start with something we can work to start a policy that evolves into an area that does speak to one city. So is there a vehicle or a policy statement that gets us to understand the breadth of this problem and the level of this imbalance?
Well, what we can do in connection, actually, with Ms. Gruhl's motion, at least as it relates to surplus property, is come back with options on, on tying the proceeds of that, of those sales to specified services. Obviously, we're going to have to work with all of you to determine what are, what are those services?
Can we identify three services where maybe this fund could address?
Yes, we could do that.
Can we start that correlation? And we'll start with baby steps.
Sure.
And then we'll go from there.
Sure. We can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. As amended then, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 28 called special by Councilmember Weezer.
Mr. Weezer, item number 28.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And this is a motion that was presented by Mr. Weiss and co-signed by Mr. Garcetti, Gruhl, Hahn, Weezer, Reyes, and Wesson. And this is an item that with the leadership of Mr. Weiss and others, we've been fighting this gun, this fight on gangs. And this is a very important one. So I just wanted to highlight it because we know we can do with a lot less assault weapons here in the United States and abroad. And this motion is supporting federal legislation that will reinstate the ban that was in place for 10 years until it expired back in 2004. And we want, I wanted to highlight it because it is so, so critical for us, not only here in the United States. California already has an assault ban on these types of weapons, but we need to have a consistent policy throughout the United States because we may ban them here in California, but if other states do not follow suit, people would just go across the border and get them. And I wanted also, Reyes, in particular right now, because of the violence that we see happening in Mexico, the drug cartels get over 90% of their weapons from the United States, many of them assault weapons that are killing innocent people each and every day. There have been more people who have died in the drug wars in Mexico than there has in Iraq. And Los Angeles, having the second highest population of Mexicans, we see relatives and loved ones in fear of what is going on in Mexico. And this is one way we could curtail the problem and the violence we're seeing in Mexico is if we continue to ban these assault weapons in the United States. So thank you, Mr. Weiss, for your leadership in bringing to us several pieces of legislation to address the gun issues. And this one is just an important one. It's out of our hands, but we're hoping with the, with the support of the second largest city in the United States, the Congress will, will see this and have our, our folks in, in Washington support that ban again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I agree with everything you said and we have strong anti-gun laws in Los Angeles, we have strong anti-gun laws in California. We nonetheless need the federal government to reauthorize that assault weapons ban. We nonetheless need the federal government to reauthorize that assault weapons ban. So in that respect, it is out of our control, but my belief was that as a result of the killings in Oakland, and some of those cops were killed with assault weapons, because that's what people do with assault weapons, that we could start a national drumbeat and start it here. So that's why we all put this in. I agree with everything you said, especially the part about Mexico. I mean, it's something that people, people in this country should be really deeply disturbed, to know that it's the sickness in America, the sick American obsession with assault weapons is resulting in our country being a net exporter of death to neighboring countries. I mean, that's just not a vision that anyone would want to have of America, and it's another important reason that we need the federal government to reauthorize this ban. So thank you for what you said.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. With that, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
And, Mr. President, for the record, on item 15, the ordinance does go over for one week.
Oh, yes, we lost one of our members, so that will carry over Ms. Han for one week on item 15. Okay, next.
Item 30, called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han, item 30.
Thank you. Is your port staff here today?
Do we have?
Seeing none.
Do you want to continue?
I'd like to continue that.
Okay, one day.
I have some questions.
All right.
That are very relevant. Let's continue until tomorrow.
Okay.
And have the port staff show up.
We'll continue that till Tax Day, without objection. Next item, please.
Item 31, called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, item 31.
We asked Lawa staff to come up for a quick second on this one. Hold my time. I just want to say that it's great that Lawa has been so successful in switching to alternative fuel vehicles. This is a big improvement for the air quality in the LAX area. We should build on this success and find ways to work with the airport and Public Works Department to have natural gas fueling facilities that are accessible to all city agencies with compatible vehicles. And I know that Public Works is working and is progressing on converting its fleet, but the lack of a refueling facility on the West Side has been problematic, and we've been talking about this with Lawa. I'd like a report back from Lawa on the status of locating a site near the airport that could be developed as an alternative fueling station for all city vehicles. And that is my ask, that you do that as a follow-up. But tell us what this program is.
Thank you very much. David Waldner with the Department of Airports. What we're here before you today for is to really just add expenditure authority to an existing contract that will allow us to continue using this contract to purchase CNG, compressed natural gas, for our fleet of buses and other equipment that runs on natural gas fuel.
How many do we have on that system right now, on CNG?
We have over 450 vehicles running.
450 vehicles running on this?
Yes.
And how are we doing in our initial discussions of electric vehicles? I know there's been discussions and modeling going on on that. Any progress on electric vehicles?
Well, we've been a proponent of electric vehicles for many years, having installed vehicle charging systems for the public to use, free of charge in our parking lots. And right now, we're looking forward to the new electric vehicles that may be coming to market, to add those to our fleet. And also, there's been efforts towards electrification of ground service equipment at the airport, too.
That's very good. Now, how many vehicles do we have over at the airport? If we have 450 that have gone this, how many more are we looking at? What's the total use of vehicles?
Well, the law, the airport fleet that the city owns and operates is around, for vehicles with engines, is in the neighborhood of 800 vehicles, and about 70% of those vehicles operate on some sort of alternative fuel.
Great.
Natural gas is the number-one alternative fuel, but we also have electric vehicles, propane, and liquefied natural gas, and some other fuels that we're using.
Excellent. And I just wanted to bring this out, and thank Ms. Han, we had it in the committee there, it went on consent out of committee, but I just wanted to shed a little light on it, so people could see here that we are moving in the right direction. We are looking at our air, and we're looking at the communities that live adjacent to the airport that would be impacted. Thank you so much for that, and I ask for an eye vote on that, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. With that, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special.
Item 35 was called special for an amending motion that has been circulated.
All right, that was called special for amending motion. Has anybody wished to reopen public hearing on this? I think there's two cards, or three cards. Seeing no motion, anybody wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, let's go ahead then, prepare the roll, please. Mr. Reyes.
I just wanted to make sure that, on behalf of the Chair of the ACND, Herb Wesson, that's coming forward with, we move the ACND Committee Report with amending motion that will restore funding to Los Angeles Business Assistance Program. The line item for the Citizens Unit on Participation include the additional recommendations of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reyes. That has been accepted as a friendly amendment. Now, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That's approved as amended. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 53, called special by Councilmember Han.
Ms. Han, item 53.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is just an item where, hopefully with your support and your approval, I'm asking all pertinent city departments to work together to make something happen quickly. And that's for the creation of the Cheryl Green Community Center. And it really reminded me, when Ms. Perry brought the victims of a crime that happened a year ago, of how devastating these kinds of crimes are in our community. In 2006, Cheryl Green, who was 14 at the time, she was an African-American teenager walking home from school, she was about three blocks from her house, and her and her girlfriends were sought out and brutally attacked. Her girlfriends were injured in the attack, and Cheryl unfortunately died almost immediately. It was pretty much known that it was a racist attack, that Cheryl was killed because she was black. But what came out after Cheryl's death, and it really sort of mobilized, I think, certainly Los Angeles, but really the nation, it became a tipping point on, you know, how we could allow these kinds of things to happen in our city without really trying to look at the cause, try to make the future better for other teenagers of all races to grow up in Los Angeles. And Cheryl's mother, Charlene, and I walked the neighborhood and found that what came out loud and clear, well, a lot of the young people said there was nothing for them to do after school, there was no community center. The Boys and Girls Club was a little bit too far away for them to walk to, and they wanted something in their own neighborhood that they could call their own. And so a very generous company, Remco, a real estate management company, actually stepped forward and offered to donate a piece of property in Cheryl's neighborhood where we could build a community center. Well, you guys all know, when you try to do something, you get all sorts of stumbling blocks, but we're very close to making it happen, and we're gonna put a sort of a portable unit on that lot. The Boys and Girls Club of South Bay has generously agreed to begin running the programs there. May 2nd is, as you know, the mayor's day of service, and so I kind of wanted it all to come together on May 2nd, see if we could get that portable unit on the site, so that volunteers who are showing up to make the city and their community better that day would have a real project to help paint and, you know, connect, hook up electricity and water, and really make it something special for the neighborhood. But, you know, Ed Ress kind of said it today as well, that, you know, sometimes when there's one very high-profile case, we sometimes do tend to forget about all the others that also have lost their lives. And really, just a month before Cheryl was killed, there was another young Latino man who was killed in his driveway, a couple blocks away. And so we've decided, at the Cheryl Green Community Center, we want to make sort of a wall of remembrance for all the people that have lost their lives through violence in that community, hopefully inspiring young people to kind of grow up and take another path in their life that does not end to violence and death. So I said all that to say, I'm just calling on our city departments to permit everything, work together, let's not let bureaucracy get in the way of really having something that will stand as a legacy, not only to Cheryl, but all of us saying, we're gonna give the young people in Los Angeles something they can be proud of, and hopefully change their lives as we do that. So support me on that, colleagues, I know you will.
Most certainly will. Thank you, Ms. Han. And with that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting interruf.
As are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused April 28th and 29th for city business that meets council policy.
All right, Mr. Reyes is excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused May 5th, leave at 11:30 for city business that meets council policy.
All right, she's excused.
Councilmember Han requests to be excused May 19th and 20th for city business that meets council policy.
All right, she's excused as well.
And Councilman Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, May 6th for city business that meets council policy.
All right, she's excused, he's excused.
Desk is clear.
All right, any announcements, colleagues? If not, can I ask everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. Colleagues, I ask first that we adjourn today in memory of a very familiar person here. I know other members, I'm sure, will want to add some things. Mr. Labonge asked me to say a few words as well on his behalf, for Odell Stewart, who was a well-known man around this building. He was a custodian with the General Services Department, and those who have visited have seen him many times because of all of the signature apron that he wore with the display of all the pins that he had, the historical pins from all sorts of events and organizations. He collected them from officials and travelers all over the world, and the cap that he wore all the time. In some ways, he kind of embodied this city. He literally wore the international nature of this city, its spirit, every single day. He was one of those people who was the most loyal of employees, always willing to take an assignment without complaining. We would see sometimes an audience member who might, you know, spill some water or drink, and Odell would be there in minutes, making sure that these chambers were restored to their beauty and their luster. No assignment in City Hall went undone when Stewart was on the job, as he was known. He was an incredible fixture here in City Hall, so I think it came as a surprise to many of us when he passed away last week on Friday. But he is survived by his brother, and certainly the spirit of Odell Stewart will be in this building every single day and in these chambers. When we, every single time we see the beauty of these floors, when we see an international visitor come, we will be reminded of him and all that he gave to the people of Los Angeles. He's a symbol of all the amazing employees that we have here. Ms. Gruel.
I met him when I was about 18 years old, and he was always that smiling face when you got into the elevator there, and seemed to enjoy his job. It was more than a job, it was a career and part of his life, and he was really, I think, what you said, embodied what it meant to be a city employee, and just shocked, did not know that he had passed away. But we will all miss him very much, and you're right, it's what makes the city great and what makes City Hall so wonderful are the people, and that's what's important, and we miss him.
Thank you. Ms. Han.
Yes, I think we were all very shocked. I feel like I'd just seen him, and you always kind of ran into him, like, in a back corner or in a back elevator, and he was just always there doing his job. But, you know, when I read about some of his commendations, I thought they were worth noting today. He got a notice of commendation for perfect attendance. He had a notice of commendation for handling a water leak in City Hall on the second and third floors. He had a notice of commendation for his hard work and the efforts he makes for all the areas he cleans. He had a notice of commendation for being loyal and dependable, for anticipating the needs of employees in City Hall and Civic Center. He was Custodian of the Month, and every one of his evaluations stated that he was competent, consistent, and reliable, and a pleasure to work with. I mean, all of us would hope that we could have those kinds of remarks in our personnel files at the end of our lives. He's certainly one of those that, when he goes through the pearly gates, he will be told, "Well done, you know, that good and faithful servant." And, you know, I got to thinking, and I don't know what his family would think, but I thought it would be really nice if they thought it was okay to sort of take his apron with his pins and do a nice little memorial to him, and display it prominently in City Hall somewhere, on the third floor somewhere, as a tribute not only to him, but really to all the custodians who are sort of the unseen workforce. Many of them we never see, because they work here long after we leave and are here all night long. But it was such a unique apron that he had, and those pins were so fascinating. And it's a story that I think would be nice to tell, you know, forever here in City Hall. So if someone could make that request of his family, I think we could probably do something very nice and display that in City Hall.
Okay. Well, we can get on that, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, it's, you know, we lost one of our own when the day of his passing, it really circulated around the city family, people calling each other, letting each other know of his passing. I was wondering if it's possible with the, if it's okay with this council, if we could award Odell, award his family his 30-year pin. I think he had been in service for 26, and maybe we could award him the next-up pin that he would have received in his 30-year of service, knowing how fond he was of the pins and the collections he had. I think that would be a very nice gesture to his family in recognition, maybe either in the display that Ms. Han mentioned, we could have one there, and have his family have the other, if that's possible.
Sure, we'll work on that. Thank you, it's a great suggestion. Ms. Perry.
Thanks, Mr. President, and I just wanted to comment about, like Janice, you know, I'd always encounter him behind one of the pillars or somewhere strange, but he was really a very kind person, and he was clearly aware of the political process, and he always had something to say about it, or ask a question or make a comment, and he was always funny, but right on point. And I think he really showed a lot of pride in what he did, and I think that's why he stayed so long. And if you asked him, he'd take time and talk to you about the pins on his apron if you wanted to know. And there was always a story behind every single one. I think his spirit will fill these halls for many years to come. And I just asked, wanted to ask, we could just give him a hand? Can we just give him a hand?
Yeah, like, three weeks ago, four weeks ago, I went from my car to the elevator, and he was right there cleaning up that area where we rushed into, and he had his pins, and I asked him, "So, how many pins do you really have?" Because he had them all on himself. He looked at me, he laughed, he goes, "Huh." He goes, "I have trays, I have..." I mean, he's got a lot of pins. So we were chatting, and we've had these chats over the years, the first time that chat was like back in 1991. My dad's a janitor, and my dad used to tell me about how people used to acknowledge him. So I thought, you know, it's good to talk to people and have that exchange. And so when we were moving from City Hall East over here, and we're going through all those changes back in the 90s, mid-90s, and we finally came back to this area, he was the guy trailing, you know, in his timely self, "What else do you need? Everything's done." And he'd just ask, and it would blow me away, because everyone was trying to cover from the council office, because everybody wanted something from General Services, and we all wanted our desks a certain way, our lights a certain way, but he asked, so I thought that was really cool of him. So we're gonna miss him, he's a great spirit, he's a great person.
Mr. Wesson.
Yeah, we sure are gonna miss him. I've only been around here four years, and he stood out like a beacon of love and humor and stability within himself. His sense of dignity is something I found very impressive, that he was a positive spirit, and he really symbolized all government workers, especially the unsung heroes, people who keep this place together. I got a couple of custodians that come into my office every day, and I hang with them a little bit and chat with them. We're all connected, we're all family, and he typified the family. I found the apron just amazing, and I just would look at it and look at the stuff, and he'd laugh with me. But, you know, he wasn't afraid to tell you what he really thought, too, which I thought was also very good, so may he rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I have enjoyed many, many years saying hello and good morning to him, and talking with him a few times, and I, excuse me, I think it was Martin Luther King who said, "If your role in life, if your lot in life is to be a street sweeper, then be..." be the best street sweeper you can be." And I think he embodied that. He took great pride in his work, didn't care what it was, he would do it with great pride and dignity. Got a little slower in his later life, but I always enjoyed talking about his pins. And I remember in 1984, the City Council issued an Olympic pin for the Los Angeles City Council. He didn't have one, and I happened to have four or five because I put together the project for the council. And one day, we were walking along, talking about his pins, and I said, "You don't have a City Council pin from the Olympics, do you?" And he said, "No, I don't." So I went and got him one, and it was like made his whole day. It was just, that was a great thing. And he had, he had a story about, like Janice said, he had a story about every pin, and he'd be happy to tell you because he took great pride in that little collection he has, but it was a segment of his life. Every one of those pins was a segment of his life, and I'm glad I was able to contribute. He was just a gentleman, and when I came in this morning, they told me he had passed. My wife was with me, and she knew him well, too, and said, "That was the nicest man I knew ever around this building." So he will be missed.
Thank you. Are there adjourning motions? Ms. Grul?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like, I'd like us to adjourn in the memory of Sylvan Wax, and I think Mr. Zine would like to second it, brother of Councilmember, Councilmember Joel Wax. He was fondly referred to as Sil by his many friends and family. He passed away on March 27th at the age of 73 in his home in Turlock, California. He was a staunch USC Trojan fan. He was a kind spirit who had a passion for education and youth. He taught at both Marshall and Tapt High Schools, which if Tom was here, I'm sure would mention, where he made a lasting impact on the students. He taught for many years here in Los Angeles before retiring to Northern California. He was also a loving husband, father, grandfather, and brother. He leaves his wife of 50 years, Myrna Wax, his sons, Dr. Jeffrey Wax and Scott Wax, and two grandsons, Andrew and Ethan Wax, as well as his brother Joel Wax. He will be missed by his family and the many students and people's lives who he touched during his life here on earth. May we adjourn in his memory.
Thank you. Mr. Zine and Mr. Rosendahl second this. Ms. Han?
I'd like to adjourn also in the memory of Dr. James Foxworthy, who is the father of Jim Foxworthy at the Port, and Stacy Jones, it's her father-in-law. Stacy Jones was the chief engineer at the Harvard Department. He was a 50-year resident of San Pedro, who passed away at his home last Sunday, April 5th. He was born in Los Angeles in 1930, and he attended Redondo Union High School, where he lettered in basketball and football, and where he met the love of his life, Peggy Lou Jones. Jim and Peg were married in 1950, before he was shipped out to Japan and later to Korea. Returning from Korea to a budding family, Jim completed studies at El Camino College and then at the University of Southern California, ultimately achieving a doctorate in civil engineering. He began teaching engineering at Loyola University in 1958, the start of a career spanning almost five decades. Recognizing his administrative skill, the university tapped him for several administrative positions throughout his tenure, including a four-year term as Executive Vice President. Dr. Foxworthy received numerous engineering honors during his tenure, including being named Diplomat of the American Academy of Environmental Engineers. He assisted the World Health Organization in development of water treatment projects in locations such as Rio de Janeiro and Barbados. He's survived by his wife Peggy, his sons, Michael, whose wife is Vicki, his son John, whose wife is Stacy Jones, Timothy, daughter Mary Ellen, whose husband is Sam, and son-in-law John Steckmeyer, as well as 11 beloved grandchildren. A funeral mass was today at 10:00 a.m. at Sacred Heart Chapel on the Loyola Mary campus. He had a great career, and he will, he will be missed by all his friends and family all over.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Are there adjourning motions? If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. We'll be in session tomorrow, tax day, April 15th. You have 24 hours to finish your taxes. Until then, we will be adjourned. This meeting is adjourned. We'll next be in session tomorrow. Have a great day. Bye-bye.